All right, we're good to go. It is Tuesday, January 2nd. It's the Brainerd City Council meeting, and I call the meeting to order. Tony, can you call the roll?
Terry, Stangline?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Chesak?
Here.
O'Day?
Here.
Stunek?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
Bado.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Item four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Motion by Stunek, second by Chesak. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? The agenda is approved. Item five is the consent calendar, where all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a move to adopt the consent calendar? Or is Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd move to adopt items A through H, but remove item I for separate discussion.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt the consent calendar with the exception of item I, which I would recommend that get moved to old business?
That works.
All right, so that will be moved to old business.
Bevins?
Yes, sir.
Under the rules of de Corman, it's supposed to come immediately following the consent calendar.
Okay, I have absolutely no problem with that. Thank you, Mr. Chesak. Okay, motion's fine. So we have a motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Chesak to adopt the consent calendar, items five A through H, and then I will be the next agenda item. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Terry?
Yes.
Stangline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yep.
Stunek?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, the consent calendar is adopted. Next up is five I. That's an approval of a new tobacco license, application for limos, et cetera. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. President, thanks for letting me pull this. It was less than a month ago. We received a multi-page memo detailing like, outlining like 13 different infractions that this business had done, and we were all convinced to deny the license, of which we unanimously as a council denied. So I was confused to see an approval on the consent calendar without any documentation or anything. I don't know why we would change our votes when all of the great evidence given by our staff less than a month ago was that we should be denying this license.
Thank you. Any staff have any comment? Connie Hillman?
I'll just say that we received a new application with a restructuring, and it is contingent upon the police and fire department approvals. And so staff put it on there as this is our normal practice. And then it would go through the review process by the police chief and the fire chief before it would actually go and be approved.
What's changed?
I guess I will turn it over to our attorney, Mr. Lengel, as he did look through the application and would be able to better state the status of it.
Mr. Johnson, the council was changed. The only thing that's changed really is that there's been an assertion that the prior owner is no longer involved with the business in any way, shape, or form. Now, I have not seen any evidence of corporate documents to indicate that his ownership has been terminated. I have not seen any evidence of corporate documents indicating that he is no longer a officer of the corporation. There is some confusion in the, or inconsistency rather, in the application documents concerning who exactly is a shareholder at this point, whether his mother is or is not, and whether his mother is or is not an officer of the corporation. So, yeah, the difference is, like I said, it's just the assertion that he's no longer no longer involved. My preference would be to have the applicant provide additional documentation, frankly, concerning ownership, concerning involvement as an officer prior to this, prior to the council taking action on it. It seems to me that would make more sense.
Okay. Any other staff have anything from the police department that's changed? Okay.
President Bevins?
Mr. Chesak, comments on the?
Yeah, these applications for license have similarly have been on our agenda, consent calendar, on a handful of occasions last year. And we're asked as a council to approve them, but we never are able to see the applications. There's something that are considering the private data involved, and I frankly have a hard time with that. We're asked to approve something we never lay eyes on. And this is the same thing. I was actually considering asking this to be pulled for that reason, and similar to Mr. Johnson. So I'm glad he did, but I just struggle with approving something we never get to see, literally. This is one of those.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
Just a point of clarification.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Just to clarify, if we were to move forward approving this, we're not actually approving the license, we're just approving the application then, so that we can further review?
Correct, it's an approval pending approval by police and fire.
Yeah, so it wouldn't necessarily come back?
But it wouldn't end up at Safety and Public Works again, like it did a month ago?
No, typically not. Since you've given the go-ahead pending just their approvals, then it's really in their hands. And if they do their routine background checks and so forth, checking out the facility and all that business, and give it a thumbs up, then it's a done deal.
But if we were to move to approve this with the condition of providing more, I forget how you put it, more documentation based on ownership of the business?
Mayor and council, I would not, I would suggest not moving to approve it. I would suggest that you postpone it until the next meeting and ask the applicants to provide information to support the assertion that ownership and involvement of the prior owner has in fact changed. There should be corporate documents to that effect.
I'll make that motion if you're ready for it.
Actually, there's no motion needed at this time, unless you wish, I mean, you could, you could notify staff to ask for additional information, I suppose.
I think we just did.
Yeah, I think so too. Or is anybody like to have any other questions, comments, or would like to make a motion on this? Okay, so at this point, the application has not been accepted?
Correct, it's just pending the further process by some staff.
And we'll ask the applicant to get in touch with staff to see if we can get this worked out. Thank you. Next up is item six, the state of the city. I believe this is the Honorable Mayor?
Oh, the honorable, indeed. This is the time in which I have an opportunity to just sit down and write some thoughts about where we are as a city and where we are going. And we've debated whether or not we do it at Christmas, or whether we do it the first meeting of the new year. I believe you had said previously that Mayor Waleen was a fan of doing it after the new year. I don't stake my claim on either side. However, we have decided to do it today.
I've heard your comments are three to five.
And so therefore, we will do it today. You are on my time, sir.
Pass him to Kleenex.
Please. An ongoing joke. All right, so just super fast, I'd like to read to you what I have prepared in comments about our city and where we are. It is not a total view of our city, but it is just kind of my own personal thoughts of where we are and where we're going, and it so begins. Citizens of Brainerd, as I stand before you today, I am filled with immense pride and gratitude for the journey we have undertaken together over the past few years. Our city has witnessed remarkable transformations as of late from the revitalization of downtown, which stands as a testament to our collective vision and dedication, to the establishment of the Northern Pacific Center at the Old Train Yard, preserving our history while evolving into a vibrant hub for visitors and locals alike. Moreover, the renewed interest in industry has quietly set us on a path to new heights. These accomplishments have laid a sturdy foundation upon which we will continue to build our shared future. In every journey, there are moments of calm where time seems to slow, providing us with the opportunity to appreciate the progress we've made. It's during these times of reflection that we recognize the resilience and determination that brought us to this point. We will look ahead, as we look ahead, I must acknowledge the path forward may not always be smooth. There will be setbacks, challenges that test our resolve, yet I assure you that where we are going will be worth the effort and hard work we invest. The next chapter in our city's history is about to unfold, and it promises growth, prosperity, and a Brainerd that exceeds even our loftiest of expectations. I want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to everyone who has played a pivotal role in our growth, in our city's growth. Our small businesses, the heartbeat of our community, have thrived, and the culture of entrepreneurship has taken root in our city. Our dedicated city staff and leaders have worked tirelessly to support these efforts and ensuring that we are not just prepared for the present, but also for the future. But let us not forget the backbone of our community, our young families, and generations of citizens that continue to bleed blue. Their energy, enthusiasm, and commitment to the values that define Brainerd are the driving force behind our city's enduring spirit. As we build a future for them, we are building a future for Brainerd that will stand the test of time. Together, as one united community, we are shaping a legacy that our children and grandchildren will proudly inherit. The foundation we have laid will remain our rock as we set our sights on new horizons. The revitalization of Highway 210, or Washington Street, will enhance connectivity and accessibility, while the completing, the complete reimagining of West Brainerd will catapult us into the next quarter century in ways few of us could even imagine even a handful of years ago. As we prepare to unveil this vision of our city's future, I want to express my deepest gratitude to each and every one of you. Your efforts contribute, contributions is the word, excuse me. Your efforts, contributions, unwavering commitment to making Brainerd the best version of itself have not gone unnoticed. Together, we are truly becoming the best version of Brainerd we can be. Thank you, citizens of Brainerd, for your resilience, your passion, and your dedication to our beloved community. The journey continues, and with your support, the best is yet to come. Sincerely, Mayor Bado.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bado.
You're welcome.
Words of encouragement and wisdom, and thank you for being our mayor. Next up is item seven, council committee reports. Seven A, Personnel and Finance Committee Chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have eight items on our agenda, first of which is to consider approval of the revised employee policy manual, and the motion is to approve the updated employee policy manual as presented.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on our agenda was just an update for the information in advance of the meeting, the joint meeting we're having with BPU as of right now on January 22nd. Stay tuned. Some information they talked about at the last BPU commission meeting, worth going over before we have that joint meeting for everybody here, but no actions mistaken.
Thank you.
Item number three, ratify the hiring of recreation specialist Haley Blank, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of Haley Blank effective January 17th, 2024. Further, that she be placed on step two of the recreation specialist wage grid, $30.56 per hour, and I so move.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry. Chairman Johnson?
This position is budgeted. This is just replacing an employee who resigned.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Please proceed.
All right, the fourth item is to consider approval of the classification points as recommended by Plarity and Hood. The motion is to approve the final pay equity points for each job classification as presented, and I so move.
Second? We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson?
We've seemingly met endlessly about this. I think you guys are all aware of these points and have varying opinions, but here they are, and we ought to approve it for pay equity.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Chairman O'Day?
I'm gonna vote no. We had 16, from our HR Director's report, we had 16 different grievances filed, and nothing got changed. We've talked about it in here, like Mr. Johnson said extensively, and nothing has changed. I think it needs to be looked at further, and I may be the only no vote, but I can't vote yes on that. So I'm a no.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Bevins?
Mr. Chesak?
I have to agree with Mr. O'Day. I look at some of the different, the scale just doesn't seem to make sense in a number of instances, and I, when you start comparing, you know, duties and responsibilities of one employee against another, is I believe how the scale is created, and that some of those just don't seem to make a lot of sense. And I wish we could take a harder look at it. I, I'm disappointed, we don't know, I don't know if we're entitled to know the grievances, the issues at hand. I trust staff would handle that appropriately and professionally, but at the same time, without knowing what the arguments are, I don't know. So I'm gonna agree with Mr. O'Day, and I will be voting no as well.
Thank you. Any further discussions? We'll go back to Chairman Johnson.
Yeah, thanks for recognizing me a second time. I fully agree with Alderman O'Day and Alderman Chesak, but I am still gonna vote yes and support the motion because of how this timeline got way out of hand, and we're under the gun, and we have to be in compliance with state law by the end of the month. We just can't talk in circles around this anymore. We're either in compliance, or we lose half our LGA. So I'm gonna vote just so we're in compliance, or to move towards compliance. This isn't the final step towards compliance.
Mr. Chair, in deference to what both Mr. Chesak and Mr. O'Day said, if we approve this this evening, adjustments, especially as we're doing union negotiations, can still be done, yes? Or is that something Chris would have to answer?
I take it.
Or either Chris or Patrick?
So the word grievance isn't the correct word. It's an appeal to the points. So there's significant changes, there are differences in those words. So to answer your question, that was not handled, that will not be handled during union negotiations. It's a grievance, or, you got me saying it, yep. It's an appeal to the job description, the jacks that they filled out, that their supervisors amended, the supervisors and so on. And so they made appeals specifically to obtain additional points, or to find out what their point value could be higher, and those changes were all rejected.
That's what I read.
But could they, Patrick, be adjusted?
Not during union negotiations. The city council can adjust.
Outside of?
Yes.
That, maybe I spoke incorrectly, but they could be, an employee could appeal their points at any time, yes?
No, the appeals process is completed.
Okay.
The city council could, as council members O'Day and Johnson and Chesak have talked about, maybe review it as you did with the city administrator's salary and points. That could be discussed at a future time, yes, but the appeals process itself and these points need to be adopted so that at the next meeting, we can present the information so that we can come into compliance with the state pay equity law.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff? Any further questions of staff? We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stunek to approve it. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign?
Aye.
That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is the approval of the earned sick and safe time policy, and the motion is to approve the earned sick and safe time policy as presented.
We have a motion by Johnson, is there a second? Second by Terry, any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
Another thing we've talked in circles about, state law, we have to do it. Here it is, it's done.
Thank, thank you for that enthusiastic endorsement?
President Bevins?
Of the state's policies. Yes, Mr. Chesak?
The one item I kind of, I guess I'm concerned about is, and I don't know how the process is handled when it talks about, if somebody with a mental health issue can get time off under this policy, how does that determine, is there, is there a note from a doctor required? Does an employee wake up one morning saying, I have a bad mental health day, and call in, and they're under this, I hope, you see where I'm going with that? It seems like it's kind of an open-ended way of saying, I need time off. If they're, how do you substantiate that as an employee, I guess, with a mental health issue?
We've got staff raising hands, I think they can maybe answer that. Either Chris or Patrick?
So with the new state law, we cannot ask if someone calls in and says they need a sick and safe time day. If it's beyond three days, we can then ask for a doctor's note. There is a retaliation clause in the law where we cannot ask for certain information. The law has tied our hands in that situation, as you're discussing, Jeff, at this point. With that said, there is family and medical leave, and if the event qualifies for family and medical leave, then we can require documentation. So a couple different laws that kind of work against each other, but kind of with each other as well. So that's the employment law fun gray area we get to work with every day.
Thank you.
Jeff, you have the floor, anything else?
Well, it just seems to me like we're, it just opens up the door for somebody to take a PTO and, you know, call it mental health, so that's all I got.
Wouldn't be any of, wouldn't be any of our guys.
No.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. This next item, we have two pieces of action. The item is to accept the retirement of Public Utilities Director Todd Wicklund. The first motion is to accept with regret the retirement of Public Utilities Director Todd Wicklund effective May 3rd, 2024, and authorize his severance payout per the employee policy manual, and I so move.
Second? We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second motion, the second action was to move the January 22nd meeting, joint meeting between the city council and the BPU, to next Monday, January 8th, in the city hall council chambers at 6:00 PM, and I so move.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
So on the agenda request here, you see there were about five things we needed to figure out. The accept with regret was an easy one, then two through five, there was some considerable discussion about the job title, the job description, who's in charge of the employees, and a lot of discussion, you know, so the BPU commissioners were down there, asked if we could have a meeting, a joint meeting, and discuss this and try to hammer it out better on what this job description is, what's the role of the commission, what's the role of the council or the city administrator, as well as what are we bag filling? What are the wages gonna be? We're gonna figure that all out Monday night, January 8th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Did you confirm with staff that that works, particularly HR?
She was in the room.
Did she jump for joy? No?
Can you make it next Monday?
Does next Monday work for staff?
Yes.
6:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion?
Mr. Bevins?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak?
This is just accelerating or moving up with them meeting for the schedule previously for the 22nd, correct?
Correct, so that we're not having the 22nd, we're having everything, what we had for the 22nd, and this added stuff, all on the 8th.
Thank you.
In a half hour.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries. We're on for next Monday, the 8th, in council chambers at 6:00 PM. Thank you, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Seventh item is the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust liability coverage waiver form, and the motion is to approve and submit the liability coverage waiver form with, does not waive the monetary limits on municipal tort liability established by Minnesota statute section 466.04, option selected, and I so move.
We have a motion by Johnson, is there a second? Second by Terry. Chairman Johnson?
This is an annual waiver we need to claim, and we have traditionally chosen the does not waive option, so we're doing that again.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next one is to consider a request to transfer the WAC cash balance to the Water and Light Department. The motion is to authorize a transfer of $125,000 of current WAC funds to BPU by February 1st, and further to authorize staff to annually transfer the full balance of the WAC funds to BPU by January 1st each year, and I so move.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson?
I think it's self-evident of what the motion is, but I'm just gonna say, I voted no downstairs, I'm gonna vote no again. I support the $125,000 for this one identified project they have. I don't support the annual just transfer of funds without identifiable water projects in the works, so I am a no vote.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign?
Aye.
That motion carries. Please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you very much. There is nothing for Safety and Public Works this evening. We have eight unfinished business, eight a call for applicants. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, before we have a call for applicants, I have a recommendation for the library board, if you are ready.
I am ready.
I would like to recommend one Sheila DeChantelle to have a seat on the library board once again.
Motion to approve.
Second? We got a motion by Johnson, a second by O'Day. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Mr. Mayor?
Wonderful, that means we now have a full library board.
Good job.
You guys are excited.
Parking next.
We've got some slots. The following seats are available on the following commissions. Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2026, two terms expiring 2025. HRA, one term expiring 2029. Parks and Rec, one term expiring 2029. Public Utilities, one term expiring 2026, one term expiring 2029. TAC, three terms expiring 2027. We also have one term on the EDA expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as council president, I've got a couple openings on the parking commission, one term to expire in 2026, and one term to expire in 2028, and who doesn't love to complain about parking? Right? This is your chance. And the planning commission has two terms, both to expire in 2027. Next up is the final reading, this is all, under unfinished business, item 8B, the final reading of proposed ordinance 1563, amending the salaries for elected and appointed officials. I gotta find out if there's anybody from staff. Where are you are? There we are. Chris Hubert, anything you wish to add to what's on the agenda?
I have nothing to add.
Nothing to add, thank you very much. So we're looking for a motion to hold the final reading of proposed ordinance 1563, an ordinance amending the salaries for the elected and appointed officials in dispense with the actual reading. Motion by Johnson, is there a second? By Stangline? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries unanimously. Next up, we're looking for a motion to adopt ordinance 1563.
So moved.
Motion by Johnson?
Second.
Second by Stangline? We're consistent. Any discussion? Hearing none. Tony, you wanna call the roll?
Terry?
Terry?
Yes.
Stangline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Chesak?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yep.
Stunek?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that, uh, ordinance is adopted. Next up is item 9, new business. Item 9A is a conditional use permit for 100 Washington Street Auto Repair. Mr. Cranbeck, anything you'd like to add to what's in our package?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Auto Smith Service Group applied to operate an auto repair service at 100 Washington Street, which, uh, the property currently has a large building for repair and storage of vehicles. Uh, the applicant confirmed that only repaired vehicles awaiting pickup within 24 hours will be stored outside of the building, which is a condition of the zoning code. Uh, all vehicles in a state of damage or disassembly will be stored internally. Uh, staff included commissioners questions and comments in the agenda request, I can answer any questions from that. Uh, so with that, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit for an auto repair service at 100 Washington Street, Brainard, subject to the findings of fact, with the condition that the fire marshal inspects and approves a property prior to operation.
Excellent. Any questions of staff? Any questions of staff, hearing none, is looking for an, a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the auto repair service at 100 Washington Street.
So moved.
Second. Stangline, second by Chesak, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is item 9B, a interim use permit application to operate a short-term rental at 524 North 8th Street. Mr. Cranbeck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so this particular property was not operating as a short-term rental without an interim use permit or a rental license, as the applicant called the department prior to wanting to start operations. Uh, the applicant has since obtained a rental license for the property and is currently letting families stay at the property, uh, as they're kind of working out, uh, potential future issues with it, um, but it did pass all inspections by the Housing Inspector as well as the Fire Marshal. Um, so with that, the applicant has met all requirements of the allowed use section of the zoning code for short-term rentals. Uh, so with that, the Planning Commission recommends approval of the interim use permit for one short-term rental unit at 524 North 8th Street with the following conditions. Uh, the house rules for quiet hours are adjusted to reflect city ordinance, the guest capacity for the short-term rental shall be set by the building official, submittal of the local option sales tax form to the Finance Department, and the interim use permit shall terminate on 12/31/2024, or upon sale or transfer of the property, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Uh, Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Was this being operated as a short-term rental?
This was not.
And they have a rental license?
And they have a rental license.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Mr. Mayor.
Beautiful little house, right over by my own home, so eyes on you.
Motion to approve. We have a motion by Chesak to approve the interim use permit, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is item 9C, also an interim use permit to operate a short-term rental at 701 Southwest 4th Street. Mr. Cranbeck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so staff did find the short-term rental advertised on Airbnb without a rental license and interim use permit. Uh, believe the applicant, uh, stated at the Planning Commission, has, uh, been, uh, using this as a short-term rental for a few years. Uh, part of that was a confusion, um, from the applicant, Mr. Abai, as Crow Wing County had already issued him a short-term rental license, uh, which the county was doing up until this past spring. Uh, with this application, there were delays with receiving all required documents, specifically submittal of the rental license application. Um, however, the property owner did, um, tell staff that, uh, since a violation was sent, um, that the property was not rented out. Um, I did take a look at it on Airbnb, there weren't blacked-out dates as it looked like there was, you know, potential rentals being scheduled, um, but it was still being advertised on there. Um, also with that, uh, the, uh, as part of the rental application, the, uh, Housing Inspector did, uh, review the property. Uh, rental license has not been issued to the applicant, they're still trying to figure out, uh, whether or not, uh, and I know he's working with, uh, a property manager to be within 50 miles of the property. Um, however, it did pass all inspections from the Fire Marshal as well as the Housing Inspector. Um, so with that, uh, there is one additional, uh, recommendation that staff, I guess, is recommending from the Planning Commission, and this was a result of the applicant, uh, stating what he's using the house for. Uh, he's currently usually staying in one of the rooms and then renting out additional bedrooms from it. So as a result, staff recommends one additional condition, uh, so it's not considered a boarding house. Uh, the property owner shall not enter into a lease or contract with more than two individuals at any one time. Uh, so with that, uh, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the interim use permit, subject to the findings of fact, for one short-term rental unit at 701 Southwest 4th Street with the following conditions. The property manager's location is verified to be within the required distance of the property, the maximum occupancy of the property is set by the building official, the quiet hours are adjusted for compliance with city code, submittal of the local option sales tax form to the Finance Department, the interim use permit terminates on 12/31/2024, or upon sale or transfer of the property, and the property owner shall not enter into a lease or contract with more than two individuals at any one time, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff, Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, sometimes I don't hear very good. Did you say that they had possibly been operating a short-term rental out of that house for three years?
For two to three years potentially, from, from county issuing it.
And did, did I also hear you say they don't even have a rental license, like the property had not been inspected?
At the time, they did not have a rental license either.
I think this is an irresponsible, or I'm not going to support any rental license.
Chairman O'Day?
It was a little unclear, um, reading through this, whether or not this person meets the requirement for living within 50 miles. So sometimes they stay in, in one of the rooms, but not all the time.
So they had, they had a previous property manager that's no longer managing the property, um, so temporarily, um, this person, as he's finding somebody would be the property manager while staying on site. However, in order to be the property manager, you have to go, essentially be there at all times, or potentially within all times of the 50 miles. So that's why, you know, any type of rental license has not been issued. Uh, he has currently contacted a, a local property manager, and staff would have to verify that before beginning any type of operation.
Wasn't the whole point of having it so that people local were owning these? Because the, the whole point, from what I remember, was we don't want a bunch of people from St. Paul buying up our housing stock and turning them into miniature hotels. I don't know where this person lives, but I, it doesn't seem like they live here, or anywhere near here.
So, I believe they do live here, um, most of the time, but also does, I believe is a professor down at, uh, one of the colleges in, in Minneapolis as well.
Okay. I'm not sold on that, so I, I'm going to vote no as well.
Anything else, Mr. O'Day?
Nope.
Mr. Mayor?
So I was pretty vocal about this the last time that we had one like this, and I, I think this is even more egregious than the last time. If you operate a business in the city of Brainard, you need to do things correctly. There are correct things that you have to go through. We just had an instance, the beginning of the meeting, involving the sale of tobacco, in which you didn't operate correctly, and so therefore, probably not going to operate anymore. It's the same way I feel about this. It's actually the exact same way I feel about this. You have been operating within the city of Brainard without following the rules, and I understand there can be confusion. I can understand that. And maybe confusion about the short-term rental, but to not have a license at all, to not be inspected, to not be doing the things that we do specifically for the safety of the people that are staying in these homes, uh, I, this is about as egregious as you get with these. And I, it's a touchy subject to begin with, in terms of short-term rentals, but I think that we as a council need to make sure that we are putting up a very clear message in the instance of this, in that if you are going to operate inappropriately within the city of Brainard, and you are going to then come forward and ask and say, oh, I just didn't know, it's not really how it works. It doesn't work that way with anything else. I don't understand why it would work in a way where there is potential for harm to individuals who are staying in a home, and so I will be very vocal against this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any further discussion?
President Bevins?
Mr. Chesak?
I, I do agree with the sentiment of, uh, Mayor Beddell, and I, I, um, we have rules, and, and they should be followed. I, I'm concerned though, how can a person like this then correct what has been violated? How, how does a person go about, do they, uh, come back and make sure we have the license? And, and I mean, I'm, I, I want to see the person be able to do with their property as, but they have to follow the rules. So can this be corrected, I guess, is my question? You, you know, if we say no right now, is there a process they can follow to come back and correct what they've done incorrectly?
Mr. Cranbeck?
So, if it were to be denied, they could come back within six months, um, if, you know, if, if they're following ordinance and reapply for the interim use permit, so there's kind of a six-month waiting period for when you can reapply for a, a short-term rental.
Mr. Cranbeck, we do, we don't approve rental licenses. What's before, so the person could have a rental license, correct?
Person could potentially have a rental license, there could be direction from council, um, if you would like to review the rental license at Safety and Public Works, it has not been issued yet.
Got it. But procedurally, we don't, it's not normal.
Procedurally, these rental licenses aren't typically issued by council.
So the, I understand, Mr. Chesak, so that's, okay. It's your floor, anything else?
Good, thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, Karen Terry, hi.
Well, hello. Um, the, the piece around the property owner shall not enter into a lease or contract with more than two individuals at one ti, at any one time, who monitors that, or how would we know?
You know, there would be a great monitoring system with that, it'd be, you know, potentially neighbors, um, indicating the amount of vehicles, or the amount of people staying there. From what the applicant has said, typically it's, uh, you may be a construction worker in there staying in one room, and then maybe a traveling nurse in the other room, so that's what's typical.
It just seems strange that we would list something that we are not going to monitor?
It would have to be probably on a complaint basis, but yeah, it would be tough to monitor something like that.
Anything else? Anybody else? Okay. We have no motion, but we have a recommendation from the Plan, uh, Planning and Zoning to approve the interim use permit, subject to the six findings of fact for the short-term rental, uh, interim use at 701 Southwest 4th Street. If we do nothing, the application is, in effect, not approved.
So a motion does have to be made.
Motion has to be made on this one.
Whether it's an approval or denial.
You got it. Okay, you understand that? So we're looking for a motion to approve or deny the application for interim use permit, but we do owe this applicant an answer.
A motion.
Motion for Mr. Johnson.
I would move to deny the application.
We have a motion by Johnson, is there a second?
A second.
Second by O'Day, any discussion on the motion to deny? Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I understand the, the short-term rentals being relatively new, and the county was licensing them, and the city is, and we've been changing ours, that I totally understand. Operating a rental without a rental license, without having the inspections, without there being assurances that there are CO monitors, that there's smoke detectors, that's putting people who stay in the city at harm. That's why we have rental ordinances. So if somebody's going to go so far, and they supposedly had a rental manager who was not aware that municipalities have rental licenses, I, I'm just, I'm not buying it. I don't trust this one. I think we should deny it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Uh, Chairman O'Day?
Along with what Mr. Johnson said, I think, in answer to, uh, Mr. Chesak's comments or questions just a minute ago, also maybe prove that you live within 50 miles. I have seen zero other addresses in this document listed, so I, I, I don't believe they live there.
Thank you. Joe Langill, something you wanted to add?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, if we could make the comments from, uh, the council members as the findings that go along with the motion to deny, so we have a record of the findings as to why it's being denied, that would be helpful.
I consent.
Okay, and you want to itemize your findings?
No, I'd like my rant as one finding.
Okay.
President Bevins?
That's awesome. Mr. Chesak?
Um, the idea of, uh, having a, inter, uh, I'm sorry, a, a short-term rental, um, it seems like we actually, if we approve this, I know the motion is to not approve, but it seems like we'd be actually approving two. Cause they, you know, it, typically, my understanding of the short-term rental is, here's a, a individual or a, a couple or a family that rents out a short-term rental, and it's all kind of in one basket. This appears to be like two operations in one roof. I'm, I'm, it seems to me we're not, this is not being addressed properly if we're going to have our rules associated with this. That's one of my reasons for voting to deny.
Thank you. Mayor Beddell?
Just a simple comment, that I appreciate that there is a six-month window, that puts a timeframe on this, we understand what the process is then, and that's an acceptable timeframe in my eyes.
All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? So, if you vote in favor of the motion, you are voting to deny the interim use permit. Everybody understand? So all in favor of denying the interim use permit, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and if you're opposed, say aye. That motion passes to deny the interim use permit. Thank you very much. Next up is the public forum, this is time allocated for citizens to bring matters, not on the agenda, so that's, if we haven't already discussed it tonight, uh, then please, and you have something you want to say, step forward and give us your best shot in three to five minutes, and we will open the public forum at 8:13. If you're online and wish to speak in the public forum, please hit star 3, and that'll notify us that you want to speak, and then when it's your turn, star 6 will unmute you. So if you'd like to address the council with something that's not on the agenda this evening, please come forward to the microphone, you're going to have to state your name and address, because we are on, um, oh, we're not on, nah, we are on TV. Are we on TV? We're on TV. We're on, we're on the, you, we're all, we're all over TV. We're probably the only thing on TV tonight. All right. I will ask a second time if you've got something to, if you'd like to address the council on, now's the time, and I will ask a third and final time, if you'd like to, please come forward, state your name and address, remember, it's got to be something that's not on the agenda tonight.
It's not.
Perfect.
Okay, my name's David Lang.
Hi, David.
I live at 13838 Cherrywood in Baxter.
Yeah, welcome.
And I was kind of concerned about this state flag thing, and I know you guys opposed to the, the North Star pattern I think it was supposed to represent, but when, uh, were the citizens going to vote on this, or select a flag? You know, we got all this internet stuff that we can post, what was there, something like over 2,000 ideas? And why can't people go on there and select yes or no for each one? And then they come up with a conclusion to which one is possible? Cause there's more ideas than just what's, what I've seen. I seen one with a loon on it, which was pretty good. I mean, loons represent Minnesota, Paul Bunyan represents Minnesota, you know, we got the state tree, state bird, um, and I was just wondering, when do the citizens get to put their part in it? Is it all a political selection? Which isn't right?
I have good news for you. Before you leave, see that young lady in the very back of the room under the clock, she'll give you the name and address, or at least where you can get it, of the people who vote on that.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it's not us.
Cause I think, I think the one that designed that flag, their mind's kind of shallow. I mean, there's so many ideas that come to mind. I'm an engineer at, at trade, and, and I get flashes of all kinds of things, you know, you have a brainstorm when you decide this stuff. And there's people, they're buying out the old Minnesota flag, because they don't want to put that one up, I imagine they're going to put up the old one. So they're all buying them out, they're having a hard time keeping the sly.
Better than Beanie Babies.
So I just wanted to, just wanted to know if you guys had an idea of how to, how to get in on it?
It's not something we've addressed.
It's out of our hands.
So it's just, uh, governor's, governor's deal, huh?
I think.
Legis, state legislature.
Legislature aboard on it.
See, and that's, this isn't a state legislator's thing, it's a people thing.
Well, that, you can contact your legislature.
I, I have.
You've got local.
He knows me, I might be related by now, but.
Set him on speed dial.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, nothing else at this time.
Thanks for giving us your opinion. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak on something that's not on the agenda this evening? I'll ask a third and final time, if you'd like to come up and speak, and it's 8:17, and Anything cool and great?
Nothing to report. I don't know if I turned this thing on or not.
You did fine. You might get selected to come to all of, yeah. Sean Strong, anything from the IT department? Nope. How about from the?
Fire chief.
Fire chief?
Nothing to report.
I didn't see over there.
London Wright in.
Um, anything from the finance director? I'm going to skip before we get to Jesse and go online to Eric Sharptier from the HRA. Anything you'd like, let us know this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just one quick update. We talked about a home that the HRA purchased, 426B Street, and that we were going to be looking to tear that down. Wanted to report that we did get that torn down and got it back to grade, and we're very happy for the partnership that we had with the city council on that, to remove some blight in the city, and looking forward to getting that sold, and a home rebuilt on that.
Thank you. From the Engineering and Public Works Department, Jesse Dean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to, quick update. All the rain that we got around the Christmas time kind of wiped out all of our ice rinks, what little ice we were able to get. But weather's turning around, so we're going to start making ice again. Hopefully, next week, we will have scatable ice.
Thank you. Community Development Director Cranbeck?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items here. So at the next city council meeting, the council will consider the Country Manor Development Final Requests, which include tax abatement and a public hearing, the PUD Final Plan, a CUP for a physical therapy office, as well as the Final Development Agreement. So that'll be at the next city council meeting. At the next Planning Commission meeting, the commission will hold a public hearing on the revised short-term rental ordinance that will potentially grandfather existing properties from the new language, which was discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting. Expiration and renewal procedures would still be required of existing short-term rentals as part of the proposed language. That's everything I have.
Thank you. Anything from the attorney? Nothing from the attorney. Anything from the HR department? And our interim city administrator, Patrick? Nothing to add? Then we'll move on to the mayor's report. Mayor Beddell?
You know what? We did a nice, long report at the beginning, and so I'm going to, I'm going to let you guys go home. Nothing to report.
Christmas coming always in a week.
Wow.
Mr. Chesak, would you please kick us off for the new year?
Yes, on the issue of the flag. Not one single elected representative of the state of Minnesota voted for that new flag. It was done by committee and appointed, all those appointments were done by Governor Walz. So that's the way we operate in the state of Minnesota. We get a new flag, not one single elected official votes for it. Thank you.
I don't think one voted for it.
None of them did.
None of them did.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Chesak. Tiffany Stangline?
Uh, Planning Commission is going to be talking about garages at some point in the not-too-distant future, so.
Excellent.
Because I have thoughts.
Chairman O'Day? Love garages. That's all. Thank you. Mr. Stunek?
I can't top that. Happy New Year to everybody.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. President, on the state flag, I preferred the golden retriever. That would have been, that would have been classic. But other than that, I hope everybody had a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Is a golden retriever in the mayor's yard? That would be something. I would vote for that one.
But I do have something to report. There are currently two piles of dog feces in my yard right now. I do not have a dog. So if you could please stop, that would be nice.
It's those neighbor kids.
But you weren't going to say any.
I have nothing to add. Mr. Stunek, we're looking for a motion to adjourn before you...
Do we have to adjourn to the meetings next Monday and stuff?
To the 8th.
Look on the bottom.
We have to adjourn to the 8th at 6:00 PM for the meeting with PUC, and then again to the 16th, 2024, in council chambers at 5:30 for the city administrator candidates.
Perfect. With all that said, I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. What's that? The 8th is 6:00 PM.